We'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Would you please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. We are extremely pleased to have all of you join us tonight. We're very excited about our presentations that will be coming out tonight. But before that, a couple of items we need to take care of. Madam Superintendent, board members, do we have any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
No ma'am.
None?
I have a few changes. The agenda was revised on May 8th, 2024 with the chairman's permission to add items 8.32, 8.33, and 10.08, and remove a recognition under representation. There was an HR personnel addendum added to item 901 today, and the board was provided a copy.
Okay. I have a couple of items that I would like to pull for speaker comment. Item 8.23 and 8.30. If there is nothing further, we need approval of minutes from the school-
I'm sorry, what was the other one? 8.23?
8.23 and 8.30. The Wellness Center contract audit report.
Yes ma'am, I have it.
We need to approve minutes from the school board workshop, which was held on April 8th, 2024, and April 15th, 2024. Also, there was an executive session for collective bargaining held on April 15th, 2024, and a regular school board meeting on April 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
I recommend approval.
They're moved.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Matthias and second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor, please let it be known by usual sign.
Aye.
Five oh. Now to an exciting thing. Madam Superintendent, I understand that you have some very fine young people you're going to recognize tonight.
I do, and with the help of our chairman, Mr. Jacob Whitman. All right, well, I'm going to get us started, and then I'm going to turn it over to Jacob for some recognition. This is always a very bittersweet day for me as I say goodbye to an amazing group of young men and women. We'll hear in a few minutes about where their next adventure will take them, but also excited to welcome next year's superintendent student advisory council members. We had a chance before this meeting to spend some time together to get to know one another. The group brought food, and it was a great time together, and then they came over here so that they could meet you all and that you can put names and faces together. And so Jacob is going to help me to first recognize our outgoing group. They're going to come up, and I have a token of our appreciation and just something to send you on your way with. And Jacob's going to call you forward and tell the board where you're headed from here. And then if you'll come up to the microphone and introduce those that will be joining our group next year. So, and if y'all will just stand when your name's called, and then if you'll join me here for a photo when we're done. All right, Jacob, you ready?
I just have to hold back tears. Well, board, Ms. Carnegie, I'd just like to say thank you all for everything. Thank you to the SSAC for giving me a chance to just get up here and speak in front of you every month. It's been an absolute pleasure, and I'd just like to say that I had absolutely amazing education at the Leesburg High School, and of course, thanks to the Lake County School Board. And I'd just like to say that every last one of the people on the board are fantastic, amazing, and it's been great getting to know you all. And I know the world will be a better place with you in it. With that, with that, I want to start it off with a person that's very, very special to me and has helped me out a lot this year at the Leesburg High School. Ms. Kylie Bryan, the student body president, at the student body vice president at the Leesburg High School, and she will be attending the University of Florida. Go Gators!
Hi, everybody. My name is Kylie Bryan, the student body vice president at Leesburg High School, and this year, Aspen Hess will be taking over as my role, so... Thank you, guys.
Next up, from Lake Minneola High School, Lauren DeMary. She will be attending the University of Central Florida.
Hello, as you know, I'm Lauren DeMary. Succeeding me will be Zoe Banton to represent Lake Minneola on our board. Thank you all, thank you, Ms. Carnegie.
Next up, from South Lake High School, we have Megan Gerwig, and she will be attending the University of the Florida State University.
Hi, my name is Megan Gerwig. I was South Lakes High School's SGA president this year, and taking over me would be Melina Primchand, who had a banquet and sadly could not attend today. We also had our vice president sadly had a family emergency, so she could not be here today. Her name was Gianna Gregwire. She'll be going to Lake Sumter State College, but taking over her position will be Clarissa Mullerew.
Next up, from Mount Dora High School, we have Tyler Hartney, attending the University of Central Florida.
Good evening, folks. I'm Tyler Hartney. Next up, I was the senior class president at Mount Dora High School, and next up taking my place is Nina Chadwick. And our senior class vice president was unfortunately unable to make it this evening, but our senior vice president or our next coming class is yet to be determined. They're being determined at the end of this week.
Next, we have another person who's helped me out a lot this year. You saw her a few times during, throughout the school year, either here supporting me or up here speaking. From Eustis High School, it is Avery Hooper, who will be attending the University of Colorado in Boulder.
Hello, everyone. It's great to see you all again. Again, my name is Avery Hooper, and I was the executive president for the SGA at Eustis High School. The person that will be succeeding me is Carmen Ellison. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight because she's at another meeting, but she wanted me to tell you that she's super excited to see you guys this year.
Next up, from East Ridge High School, is Kayla Jackson, who will be attending the University of Georgia.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kayla Jackson, soon to be the former East Ridge High School class president. My successor will be Tyra Frey.
Next up is a good friend of mine from Taverius High School, Jonathan Matheny, who will be attending the University of Florida.
Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Matheny, and I was the senior class president this year at Taverius High School, and I'm proud to welcome Jalen Smith as my successor. Thank you.
It's no coincidence these two are right after each other. And next up, from Taverius High School, another and one of the smartest guys I know, Isaac Mitchell from Taverius High School, and he will be attending Florida State University.
Hello, my name is Isaac Amari Mitchell. I was SGA president of my school, Taverius High School, and my successor will be Madison Kate Watson.
Next up, from East Ridge High School, we have Ava Pike, who will be attending the University of Georgia.
Hello, my name is Ava Pike. I'm the senior class vice president at East Ridge, and my successor is Alena Miza.
Next up, we have from Umatilla High School, Natalie Sturm, who will be attending Santa Fei State College.
Hi, everybody. I'm Natalie Strum. I was SGA president and senior class president at Umatilla High School. My successor is Mitty O'Brien. Unfortunately, my vice president was unable to be here tonight, and her successor is Jamie Stevens.
This next one's a bit of a troublemaker. I think you should do this next one. Yeah, I think so.
I guess it would be odd him introducing himself, right? We all know Jacob Whitman. He has just done an outstanding job this year on behalf of this fabulous group. And so, Jacob, we wish you well as you head off to Santa Fe, and I know you're going to keep doing amazing things, and his family is here tonight. Thank you for letting us borrow him every month. He is truly an amazing young man, so congratulations to you all.
We would like to ask that you guys come upon the dais so the board members can individually greet you.
Sorry, just to the moment real quick. I completely forgot to introduce my amazing successor, Ms. Janel Henderson.
The next recognition is something that we look forward to every year. Our Lake County Education Association prevents a scholarship, and the president, Mrs. Smith, always brings along one of my favorite people, Mrs. Stevens, to help her. So, Mrs. Smith, you're on.
Come on, Terri. Yep. I'm Kathy Smith. I'm Lake County Education Association president, and Terri Smith will introduce herself.
We're changing this around a little bit. Oh, excuse me. Good evening, Superintendent Carnegie and our Honorable Board. Tonight, we're here to honor two fabulous young ladies receiving the Cynthia Schumacher Award from LCEA. And I'm going to switch over to this one. And this recipient is from Mount Dora High School, Christina Romano, and she's unable to be here tonight because they're having baccalaureate awards, and she is a fabulous young lady. She has a GPA of 4.3 and plans to attend Daytona State University, majoring in nursing and education, and that's one of the things that Cynthia would be very pleased with is the education part. Rodney Torrance said that he would take 100 Christinas over any other student he has worked with in the last 29 years. Christina is conscientious and thoughtful. Her self-advocacy and respect for others will make her stand tall in all future endeavors. And then we have the young lady that you've already met, the beautiful Ms. Kylie Bryan from Leesburg High School with a weighted GPA of 4.25. She plans to attend the University of Florida, majoring in business marketing. Currently, she is interning at LCEA, and she's doing a lot of technology. Only compliments adorn this young adult. Her activities and honors are numerous. National Honor Society, Student Body Vice President, Triad President, Miss Lake County, Varsity Cheer Captain Key Club, Science National Honor Society, along with Girls State. Kylie's school counselor, Ms. Lisa Shoddy, said in her letter of recommendation that when Kylie was a junior, she became a teacher assistant in the guidance department and was always one of the best she'd ever had. Kylie has helped the school and community by raising funds. She is definitely community-oriented. She takes great pride in her extracurricular activities. Kylie is also dual-enrolled at Lake Sumter College. Ms. Shoddy said she's committed to academics, completing all graduation on requirements as a junior. What an inspiration. I start my day with a young lady that shines, and the world is a better place, from Ms. Shoddy.
Okay, you get to come back. On the dais. I would now like to invite Mr. Scott Flowers, the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching, Learning, and Leadership, to come forward for the superintendent's reading challenge.
And as they come forward, I know some of my student groups that's here tonight, you asked if you had to stay for the whole meeting, and so I'm just letting you know that as we transition, I know some of you had other events to attend, so feel free if you need to leave, that it's okay.
So Ms. Obondo and team are going to take care of these, and thank you.
Ms. Obondo? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, and school board members. It brings me great joy to be here tonight to recognize district schools for their continued efforts to promote authentic literacy. Through the superintendent's reading challenge, our goal is to develop avid lifelong readers. I'm joined this evening by Sherri Smith, our K-5 ELA program specialist, or K-2, and Megan Randolph, our K-5 curriculum manager, who will help me distribute our awards. This year, I'm happy to announce that we had 33 schools complete the superintendent's reading challenge. 21 elementary schools had a total of 13,434 student readers complete the challenge. Eight middle schools had 2,889 readers complete the challenge, and four high schools had 1,091 readers complete the challenge. That's a total of 17,414 readers who read a whopping 404,813 books during the time period of the superintendent's reading challenge. So we're very, very proud. That is also up 2,000-plus readers from last year's numbers. So way to go. Super excited to celebrate these schools, these tremendous leaders, and our students. So I'm going to turn it over to Sherri Smith to begin.
Good evening, Superintendent Carnegie and board members. All right, we will get started. First up is Astetula Elementary. Cypress Ridge Elementary. Eustis Heights Elementary. Fruitland Park Elementary. Grassy Lake Elementary. Groveland Elementary. Lost Lake Elementary. Pine Ridge Elementary. Rhymes Early Learning Center. Sawgrass Bay Elementary. Seminole Springs Elementary. Taverius Elementary. Treadway Elementary. And Triangle Elementary. We have three middle schools. We included, two include the K-8, so a real Cole Academy, K-8. Lake Point Academy, K-8. And Carver Middle School. Oh, sorry. And Sorrento Elementary, sorry. And then we have one high school, Mount Dora High School.
Thank you very much. So if you guys, just like the students, we'd like to personally greet you, so if you will come up this way. It is now time for public input. We have a card from Mr. Steve Kelly. If you'll come up to the podium, sir, and state your name and address, please. Hi.
Good evening, Superintendent, Ms. Diane Carnegie. Good evening, board. My name is Steve Kelly. I'm a rookie teacher this year. I want to give a representation of Sorrento Elementary. I think they just walked out. I didn't know we were doing all this recognition and congratulation to all the young men and women over here. It's great to see that. Just retired from the military after 20 years doing some crazy operations, lead the nation hurricane rescues, hundreds of million dollars, drug intel, cart down in Central and South America. My brother works there, Lake County Sheriff's Department. My mom has a business at Taverius. 20 years, Lake County assistants, I don't know what it's called. But either way, I'm here tonight based on school. I'm a rookie teacher, do the Troops of Teachers Program. Couple of things I'd like to see changed possibly is ESOL. So, yo gringo un poquito español, but we don't have ESOL in Lake County schools. It's where children are coming in, that English is a secondary language. So, in my classroom alone, I have five children. They don't know a word of English, right? I only know so much Spanish. Most schools that I grew up going to had ESOL classes, so bringing all these kids in here. Lake County is the fastest-growing county in the state of Florida. Look, everything building, we're about to look like Orlando. But a lot of these people coming in from countries that don't speak English, primarily Spanish. We need to try to get ESOL classes back in the classrooms, or not in classrooms, but in the schools, because right now, we're failing these kids. You know, I get trying to learn English is a big thing, and they're going to learn English, but we're not teaching them the standards. We're trying to, but if I cannot communicate with the student, how am I teaching them, right? Communication is key to everything. So I'd love to bring back ESOL back into the school systems if we can, or at least try to get more bilingual teachers in the school system. Second one was teachers' pay based on scores. So I'm learning all this stuff, and I guess a lot of the teachers' pay is based on scores. Teachers don't control which kids come into their classroom, you know, especially elementary school. I don't control who comes into my classroom. I can have the best, brightest students in the world based on scores. Doesn't mean that the best student, right, just the scores, and I'm a rookie teacher, and it makes me look good, but really, I'm just a rookie teacher. My colleague over here has 19 years and probably one of the best teachers I've ever met, one Teacher of the Year last year. Unfortunately, she could have kids that really need the assistance, but their scores may be low, and it affects her pay, which it should not do. In elementary school, it's tough. Doing 20 years in the military, I've had, I can't probably tell you over this, but it's way more stressful being in these classrooms. But elementary, we don't control who is EBD or ESC or major behavioral issues. We're identifying these children. So 90% of our time is counselors, talking to them, they got a lot of issues at home, trying to identify them. You know, scores is great, but let's try to make these kids productive members of society, respectful, chivalry, yes ma'am, yes sir, and somehow, we got to get away from paying teachers based on the score, because that doesn't tell if the kid is good or bad, you know? So, I have two seconds. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We appreciate you taking the time to come and share with us. It's appreciated.
And we'll make sure that you get some of that information that you spoke about, and so I see your wonderful principal still here, so we'll make sure that we get with you.
Okay, Education Foundation Report.
Good evening. My name is Casey Edmondson, and I am here on behalf of the Education Foundation. Our Apple Mart store has been open, and last week was the last week for our teachers to come. We have had a total of 1,055 visits, which equates to $162,500 that we saved these teachers out of their pocket by going to our Apple Mart stores. Our Ladies for Education Golf Tournament was a huge success. We had 85 players and grossed $22,000 for this event. It was sponsored by DA CG Incorporated and Wharton Smith. The winners from the teams donated over $2,000 directly back to the school of their choice. We had several recipients. There is money left over from the resiliency grant, so we have applied for another $50,000 for the VPK Expansion Program at Eustis Elementary School, and anticipate that we will get a minimum of $40,000, and we should know later this week if that has been approved. The Foundation Board has voted to fund the expansion of the VPK program at Rhymes and the CTE Childcare Program at Leesburg High School, and the Teacher Intern Scholarship Program in the total amount of $200,000. The Retirement Dinner is coming up on May 22nd at the Venetian Center. Our Red for Ed Community School Supply Drive kicks off, as it does every summer, on July 1st. The weigh-in will be at the district office, held on August 1st. We have already purchased 1,500 backpacks and school supplies to distribute to the elementary schools based on FTE. Our Take Stock in Children program has hosted their senior graduation luncheon. Our Take Stock in Children program has hosted their senior graduation luncheon. It was held on April 23rd and honored 29 of our graduates. We'll be hosting the Mentor Appreciation Gala on May 23rd at the Venetian Center in Leesburg. We also finished up this week with presenting all of our Take Stock in Children awards, as well as our Foundation Scholarships. I actually recognized several of those students that were part of the Advisory Committee. So at each of our high school award ceremonies, we get to present these students with their scholarship recognition. This year, we awarded over $75,000 to 65 different seniors. And 36 total, 30, excuse me, 36 Take Stock in Children scholars have also signed their agreements and are new students within that program. The May Foundation Board meeting is being replaced this month with our Strategic Planning Session, which is held this week on May 15th from 11 to 3 in the District Office. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We not only thank you, Casey, for the wonderful report tonight, but we thank you for all the hard work that you do every day. It doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you. Mr. Cole, Attorney's Report.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, no unfinished business. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on the consent agenda?
I do. I recommend approval of items 8.01 to 8.22, 8.24 to 8.29, and 8.31 to 10.08.
So moved.
Second. It has been moved by Mr. Mathias and second by Mrs. Luke. All those in favor, let it be known by a usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Five oh, it passes. Um, we need to go back to our card. We have a speaker for 8.23 and 8.30. Uh, Beth Ratliff. Okay, you have three minutes. If you would please state your name and address.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Superintendent, and Board members. My name is Beth Ratliff. I am the Chief Operating Officer at Premise Health, and my address is 733 Throck in Brentwood, Tennessee. And I am here today to ask the Board, uh, to delay a vote on the proposal to contract with Marathon Health, and request that they run a formal process for this request. There was no formal process conducted, and other vendors with significant experience in physical therapy, behavioral health, and workers' compensation were not evaluated or considered. Very, the variable cost that was quoted, uh, in this proposal is significantly undermarket, and the Board bears the cost of any overages, and I would encourage you to take a look at that and what the, the market rate is for build-out. The costs and services that are being, uh, proposed here are duplicative of services that are already provided, including workers' comp, DOT, and provider dispensing. Additionally, there is existing space in an existing center where those services could be provided, and that has been discussed already with our client contact. The member experience will be fragmented if you move forward with this proposal. Members will be required to use different portals to log in, to make appointments. They will need different portals to access virtual care. There will be confusion about where they should go for similar services that are provided at other locations, and they won't be able to seamlessly access care across all locations, which is an expectation currently that a member who starts care in one center can seamlessly move to another care, uh, another center for care. Uh, provider dispensing will be limited only to the site where the dispensing has begun. Members will not be able to get their refills at other locations, which will cause member dissatisfaction and confusion. Also, we heard, uh, in the Board meeting last week, or in the workshop, that there was concern about, uh, large companies and acquisitions and decrease of services provided. And want to go on record of saying that Marathon recently completed an acquisition, uh, significantly transformative, and so I'd encourage you to be aware of that as well. And then finally, we are very concerned about the location being proposed, uh, for this center. This is a center that would provide services to both adults and pediatric, particularly for behavioral health, and it is located next to the cannabis dispensary. So I'm not sure if you all are aware of that, but I would certainly not want my child to go in for a behavioral health visit while there are people standing in line to have their cannabis dispensed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I would like to address the issue about the procurement. Uh, Section 285.057 of the Florida statutes has an exemption for medical-related services, including for companies that provide or arrange for healthcare services. So I do not believe that there was a requirement of complete, of competitive solicitation in that particular case.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Madam Superintendent?
That was specific to item 8.23. I recommend approval of the Health and Wellness Specialty Services Center.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr., pardon me, by Mr. Mathias, and second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor, let it be known by a usual sign.
Aye.
Five oh, passes. Um, do you want to speak to 8.30? Okay.
I, I, I'm Will Wright. I'm the General Counsel of Premise Health.
Okay, I don't have a card.
I, she said to just sort of piggyback on hers. Beth, Beth is gonna speak, but I'm just.
Yeah, usually if you're going to speak, you, for the record, we need the card. So if you would fill it out for us, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay.
I, along with other members of the Premise Health Executive Team, viewed the video of the audit report, and we are here today to respond to misunderstandings, mischaracterizations, and inaccuracies presented to the Board. Frankly, we were dismayed, uh, to see some of the comments that were made, and the way that we were portrayed in such a negative manner, and we'd like to present corrections. We have passed out to you packets that detail each individual item that was addressed, um, that we fill and take issue with. Um, we are asking that you keep this audit open while you review our submission to the audit. At no time were any Premise Health leadership team members made aware that there was an audit being performed. You all asked during the meeting or the workshop last week, what level was involved. There were local directors, uh, involved. We were not made aware of the executive team, and if, had we known, we would have immediately responded to, uh, to this audit. In fact, we are here today with all of the requested items on your audit. Um, it would happily meet with Superintendent or anyone else to go through all of those requested items. Uh, there was also, um, really confusion about why there was no escalation when our client contact had ample opportunity at multiple times interacting with AVPs, VPs, SVPs, and EVPs of our organization. In fact, as late as December, uh, we met with him in person, uh, asked if there were any issues with the contract, and there was never a discussion of audit. Also want to call out that, um, we are offering to pay the $20,000 that was spent of taxpayer monies for this audit, uh, because we don't think it was a good use of taxpayer money, and we're accountable for the fact that although we weren't escalated to, we did not respond. There was some inflammatory, uh, conversation about the nature of Premise Health as a hedge company and the fact that we are providing decreased service. In fact, we are providing increased service. There are details in the, in the report, uh, including national virtual health at no cost. There have been over 2,000 visits provided at free, for free to you of significant value, in addition to free best-in-class technology at no charge to you. Would encourage you to take a look at the information in your packet. Um, would also encourage you to take a look at some of the reputational items that we've included in your packet. We are an award-winning company. We are regularly, uh, awarded for our work with hiring military vets and working with veterans and military spouses. We have Triple H C accreditation, um, and we are delivering high-quality care, high-member experience, including over a four out of five, uh, member service and member satisfaction to your members. Details are in the packet that we are submitting.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming, and we certainly appreciate the packets, and thank you for your time.
We would like to submit all of our responses to the audit as well. Who shall we give those to?
You can give them to the clerk. Do you have them with you tonight?
Yes, we do. We did not submit the request that we're looking for patient health information. We didn't believe that there was, uh, appropriate request made. We are willing.
I think probably what you're gonna need to do for that is just make an appointment with a, miss, whoever you would like to speak to, and certainly they would help, be able to help you with that.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We just do not want to, uh, share the, the patient's health records inappropriately, which is what has been requested at this point.
Okay.
We don't think you would want us to do that either.
We certainly do appreciate your time.
I do want to say this. I do appreciate you coming and, and speaking to your, um, to your defense, if you will, because, um, based on what we heard from the person doing the audits, that y'all were not forthcoming, and so you may be a little bit closing the barn door, and may, so we'll see what's in the notebook.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And he was correct. He did not misspeak. We were not forthcoming. We did not answer the audit. Uh, there was a misunderstanding from our director-level folks, taking, um, direction from a former CareHere employee, who is our attorney that still works with us, who narrowly interpreted the right to audit, um, and was not aware that we routinely answer these types of audits. We have nothing to hide, and you will see that in what we have submitted. It was of no intention of ours, and again, had anyone escalated to anyone further up than a local director, we would have answered promptly, and you will see in our documentation. Payroll, you know, hours worked, Triple H C, all of the documentation on reporting, all of that information is there. The other thing that was discussed related to right to audit, um, was that it had been attempted several times to change the language in our amendment, to get an amendment to change language to right to audit, which was entirely inaccurate. In fact, we just completed an amendment, um, and there were several back and forth in negotiation. I have all of the red lines from both your side and my side, along with emails. Never once was even a discussion made about right to audit. We would be happy to have that conversation with you, but that was not something that we rebuffed, as was stated, uh, in, in this, uh, workshop last week, and we were, appalled that that was the way that we were characterized, because that is not how we do business.
You do admit that it was accurate, though. In other words, they had asked for information, and you didn't give it.
Yeah, that is correct.
You just said that.
That is correct, yes.
It's not completely inaccurate.
It is not completely inaccurate that we, and we fully admit and are accountable for that.
Y'all don't need to sit down, because we need to move on with the meeting in a second.
Yeah, we are, we are, we are completely accountable for the fact that we did not respond to the audit, which is why we are offering to pay, um, to reimburse you whether or not you keep the audit open. Um, we do want you to have the information, so you do not walk away, uh, thinking that we have something to hide, because we do not. What was completely inaccurate was a comment made that we have tried to rebuff an amendment to change audit language. We have never done that. There has been no conversation with us about that, and we have all of the back and forth red line documentation. We did just complete an amendment with you.
I do appreciate you coming.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Based on, based on this conversation, I do think it would be appropriate to keep the audit open. So before the Superintendent makes a motion, can I make a motion to table this?
Whatever the will of the Board is.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I make a motion that we table the audit, and we could let it remain open so that documentation can be looked at. It is very important for the decisions that we have coming up, so.
I would second that.
Thank you.
We have a motion to table and keep the audit open, made by Mrs. Luke, and it's been seconded by Mr. Mathias. All those in favor, let it be known by a usual way of voting.
Aye. Aye.
Five oh, to keep it open.
Thank you. Please let me know. I'm happy to come here anytime, or to meet individually with you all to answer any questions.
I would only suggest, because I would stay very engaged if I were you.
Happy to.
We don't want any more excuses.
Well, and, and I don't either, so.
I, I sense that about you.
Yes.
So well done.
Absolutely. I'm here when you want to talk to me. My business card is in.
Actually, we don't want to talk to you. You talk to those people over there.
I would be happy to talk to them.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We are now to the discussion part. We have some, uh, policies. Mr. Cole?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we have, at this time, we're gonna open up a public hearing to consider the following: tentative approval of Policies 2271, Articulation and Access to Florida College System Institutions, 2421 Career and Technical Education, 4242 Staff Development, 5410.01 Promotion Acceleration Placement and Retention. At this time, if there's anyone would like to speak on any of these policies? Okay, no public input. We'll close the hearing.
I recommend tentative approval of the policies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It was been moved by Mr. Mathias and second by Mr. Brandenburg. All those in favor, let it be known.
Aye.
Five oh.
Now again, open a public hearing, uh, to consider tentative approval of Policy 7510, Use of District Facilities and Approval of the Associated Fee Schedule. Anyone who has any public input?
And just a correction. We pulled that, um, fee schedule, um, and are just seeking approval of the policy.
Okay, good.
May we close the public hearing?
Okay, so moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Mathias, second by Mrs. Luke. All those in favor, let it be known by a usual sign of voting.
Aye.
Five oh.
Next, we open a public hearing to consider tentative approval of Policies 6320, Purchasing and Contracting for Commodities and Contractual Services, 6325 Procurement Federal Grants Funds, and 64550 Local Purchasing. Uh, does anyone have any public comment on these policies? May we close the public hearing?
Recommend tentative approval of the policies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Mathias and second by Mr. Brandenburg. All those in favor, let it be known by a usual way of voting.
Aye.
Five oh, passes.
Open a public hearing for consideration final approval of Policies 5136 Wireless Communication Devices and 5610, Removal Suspensions Alternative Disciplinary Placement and Expulsion of Students. Do we have any public comment? There are none. The, uh, public hearing is closed.
Recommend final approval of the policies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Mathias and second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor, let it be known by a usual way of voting.
Aye.
Aye. Five oh, passes. Madam Superintendent, your report?
We had no letters of condolence sent since our last, sent, since our last meeting. Um, we do have a few business partners who we, uh, I, who I sent some letters of appreciation to, including Mission Inn, uh, Resort, thanking them for all they do for the students of Lake Hill School, also to the Father's House in Leesburg, uh, for their campus beautification project, all the volunteering that they do, as well as the many wonderful things they do for the faculty and staff at, um, their surrounding schools, and also to the Leesburg Food Bank, who every week sends home fam, uh, food with students, um, with some of our needy families for the weekend. So thank you to those individuals and organizations, and also just, um, my appreciation for all of those who really just wrapped their arms around our, our staff last week during Teacher Appreciation Week, from our administrators, and our parents in the community who showered them with all kinds of special things last week. So thank you all for taking such good care of them and loving them. Um, and I just want to say, from me, that, um, I appreciate you all as well. Um, graduation starts tomorrow. So, it, we have a week full of graduation ceremonies, so congratulations to all of our graduating seniors. Look forward to seeing you at those ceremonies. Um, and also, um, I want to remind everyone that during the last week of school, students will be dismissed early on Wednesday, May 22nd, Thursday, May 23rd, and Friday, May 24th, which are our last few days of classes, and we will follow the regular Wednesday dismissal schedule for those days. And lastly, while we are getting close to the end of the school year, we're not quite there yet, so teaching, learning, and testing still is continuing, so reminding parents and students to show up big every day, and, uh, we'll look forward to the last several days of school and all the celebrations.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mathias?
So this year is very special to me, a graduation. It's always the culmination of our hard work we do as a Board to shake the hands of those students that graduate. Believe it or not, the people that I'm shaking hands with tomorrow and Friday were first graders when I came on this Board. And so it's a great deal of pride, um, that I have, and you think about that transition. I started reflecting today about teachers. You know, everyone in their mind has that teacher that moved them and, and inspired them to be lifelong learners, and what pride they must have every year as we go through this graduations, um, season. And the last is to Mrs. Luke, soon to be Dr. Luke, and to Mr. Dodd, that I remember when my dad was on the school board. that I remember when my dad was on the school board, and when I graduated, he was on the, he came up and handed me my diploma. And I thought about, a lot about you two guys and your daughters as they crossed that stage, how proud you must be. And so, anyway, just know that from afar, I'm sharing that spirit, and I hope that y'all hand them their diploma, because it was stuck with me for now fifty years. That's all I have.
You got this.
I don't know that I do.
And I intentionally wanted her to cry.
I literally went down to pray for the mamas right now, because we aren't okay. So congratulations to all the graduates, and Happy Mother's Day. And I did want to thank Mr. Carr. I have to say this, for making sure that the regional softball field is ready, or the softball field is ready for regionals tomorrow night. And American Kitchen has said that they would sponsor the first fifty students to show up for the game tonight, are in free. They wrote a check to Eustace High School for the admission. So Eustace High School students, show up with your ID, and you will be in that game for free, and let's take it all the way to state. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Thank you.
Mr. Dodd?
Yeah, like the others, I've done quite a lot of reflecting on graduation this week, and just kind of doing some quick math. And I think I've had the opportunity, the privilege of shaking somewhere between five and six thousand hands of students who have crossed the graduation stage since my time on the Board. And certainly, this year will be extra special, you know, in two days, when I get the opportunity to congratulate six-hundred-and-ninety-eight other kids. And for the first time, one of those will be my own. And certainly, it's special for all those reasons. But that one crossing the stage, it's my own, is a big source of the inspiration that I got into education. You know, I started teaching partway through her kindergarten year, and I just remember sitting at home with Addison, working on her homework together, and watching the transition as I was reading the bedtime stories to now she was reading them to me. And I thought, what an incredible thing to, that these teachers have done to be able to give her those skills and the love of learning. And I just knew I wanted to start being part of that for other kids. So she made me a better teacher, has certainly made me a better school board member, as I've had the opportunity to, you know, hear about some things through her eyes and the eyes of her friends. Certainly, she's been not shy about giving some of her opinions through the years. And, but really, I'm just so thankful for so many people who have poured into her, as well as all the other students. You know, now Addison and I have tracked along this journey in education for the last thirteen years together. I've just seen countless people over the years, administrators, teachers, cafeteria workers, custodians, bus drivers, just, you know, just treat her personally, you know? That she's not a number of forty-two thousand kids, but, you know, an individual. And all those people who have inspired her along the way, my big thanks to them. You know, I'd love to name them all by name, but, you know, I know we don't have the time for that. But it's just remarkable that people are willing to just, you know, stand out and make that such a special journey for our kids. And so much so that her inspiration now is to go off to the University of Florida, major in elementary education. And, you know, that's only because of, you know, how many people have just, you know, made a positive impact on her life. And I know that it happens not only for her, but for all of our students. So it just gives me, you know, more sincere appreciation as a school board member for the work that we do. So, thank you.
Very nice. Mr. Brandenburg?
Hard to follow those tonight. I must add to Mr. Mathias's comments. I too had the opportunity for my mom to hand me my diploma, and that was a very, very special moment. So excited for you both to have the same opportunity. A lot of praise this week. Teacher appreciation last week gave me the opportunity to visit a lot of campuses and eat a lot of good food. On Wednesday of last week, I was at Carver Middle School. Church of the Lakes did a taco bar for all the teachers and staff there. And soon after that luncheon, Ms. Cunningham and I were at Beverly Shores Elementary for a penning ceremony that Ms. Morgan did for all of her teachers. And she had, I think, five teachers that have been with this district almost forty years, and recognized them all in their five-year increments of service. And just a really, really special day at Beverly Shores. Thursday morning, started early at The Father's House, who was mentioned by Ms. Carnegie. They did a breakfast for Rhimes Early Learning Center, Oak Park Middle, and Leesburg Elementary in a rolling format all morning there. So always thankful to Lisa and the team at The Father's House for what they do for our schools. And then was at Oak Park that day for lunch, also by Church of the Lakes, at the same taco bar as the day before, just as good as the day before, to celebrate those teachers over there as well. And lastly, ended Friday night back at Beverly Shores Elementary for their first soon-to-be annual musical theater performance of Beauty and the Beast Junior. So Mr. Anderson and his team over there, along with Ms. Christidas and Ms. Montez, did a wonderful job. It was a spaghetti dinner and a fantastic performance. It just really goes to show all that we've got to offer throughout Lake County schools. So from elementary to high school, there's a lot going on, a lot to be proud of. So always thankful to serve on this Board. Thank you.
I guess I'll round out by saying I had the privilege of giving both my children diplomas, and we actually have a picture in our house of my husband giving our son his high school diploma. So you guys have something that you will be able to look upon and last a very long time. I always believed as a principal that my school was as strong as my weakest link. I believe that about Lake County schools. And I am very proud to tell you, as a member of this Board, I think our weak links are far and few. I think we have strength in our unions. I think we have strength in our administrators. I think we have strength certainly in our Education Foundation. And as you saw tonight, we actually are very committed to making sure that we make good decisions for all of our employees and for their benefits. So with that, I say to you that whatever your affiliation is with Lake County schools, whether you're a student, whether you're an administrator, or whether you're just a guest who happens to have a contract with us, you need to feel very fortunate that you are in the county of Lake and that you are a part of this awesome thing that we have called Lake County School Board Educating Students. It is our commitment always to do the very best that we can do for every single student. So with that, unless there's something further, we will adjourn our meeting.